Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We are ready to begin this afternoon's board meetings. I apologize for the lights. There's something that's taken place that's out of our control, so the lights will not be on, but we are here and it is being recorded. Sergeant at Arms and Designee, has the front lobby been attended to ensure public access?
Going to say yes? I see people in here. Ms. Sherry? I'm saying yes. Okay. Call to order. The school board meeting of October 4th, 2022 is now called to order. The time is 3:05. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district vision to be a world-class school system. Board member Givenelli will be participating and voting by phone this afternoon, given the suspension of board policies due to the emergency regarding health, safety, and welfare as a result of Hurricane Ian. Is Ms. Givenelli online yet? Does anybody know? Ms. Schaefer? Okay. When she comes in, we will let everyone know. Board member Fisher, although she is fine, was unable to attend this meeting this afternoon. The approval of the agenda, this afternoon's agenda includes a moment of silence, pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements. One item under other business, public commons, consent action items, which include one item under board office, six items under academic services, two items under business services, one item under human resources, 15 items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms...
Second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. Patrica, seconded by Ms. Gittens. And please record your vote.
Oh, I'm not up. I'll be in audible, I'm not up yet.
Ms. Gittens, did you say that you were not up?
I'm in audible, I'm not up yet.
Okay. So how do you?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, Ms. Givenelli, is Ms. Givenelli here? Ms. Givenelli, can you hear? Because I see that you voted.
Ms. Jordan, can I?
Yes, please.
Ms. Givenelli is online?
Okay, so 6 to 0. Thank you. Ms. Vaughn will lead us in a moment of silence, after which Ms. Patrica will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Vaughn, please lead us in a moment of silence.
Please stand. I almost don't, which is unusual for me, not knowing what to say after the horrendous time all of us have gone through. Some more fortunate, let's say, than others, but let's keep all of those that lost everything, including loved ones, in our hearts and in our minds and in our prayers. And let's spend another moment in silence, thinking about our community and our loved ones.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Patrica?
I almost said the "our father." We need that, too. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Character word for October: respect. The quote is, "There is no respect for others without humility in oneself." The design that we do not see, sorry, was created by Adric Ribble, a 10th grade student at Fort Myers High School. And I apologize that I'm not sure why we're not seeing it up here for all of you. Lot of things that we're going through today, so excuse us for that. The next is, we have other business, the next items on our agenda is the superintendent's comments/reports regarding the aftermath of Hurricane Ian. Before we begin, however, we want the community to know that we realize that many of you are suffering. You have lost your homes or without power and water. And are experiencing things you could never imagine. Please know that the Lee County School Board stands with you as we recover and we rebuild. We know the critical role we play in helping our students, families, and community at large. And we will do all we can to support you, because we are all in this together. We would be remiss if we did not thank our government partners for their collaboration, both state and local, during these difficult times. We also recognize the hard work of our dedicated staff, including our chief executive officer, the superintendent of schools, Dr. Bernier, the superintendent's cabinets, our emergency operations team, and our school and district leaders. You have been working 24/7 during and after the storm. Know that you are appreciated. These are challenging times for our administrators, teachers, and staff, but we will get through it together. We will support each other, be there for one another, and stand together. The school district of Lee County is committed to reopening schools in a safe, sensitive, and effective manner. It is our top priority to make that happen. With that being said, Dr. Bernier, can you please provide an update regarding Hurricane Ian, Ian, whatever you want to call it, and its aftermath? Dr. Bernier, please.
Madam Chair, members of the community gathered, members of the community watching, thank you very much for this opportunity. It has been historic times, no question about it. So last Wednesday, we were ground zero for Hurricane Ian. This historic storm has impacted each member of our community. For some, the impact has been life-altering, with the loss of loved ones and homes. Others are starting already to recover with the restoration of power and water. This is a continuum of impact, but it is also a continuum of personal trauma. No matter how you were impacted, we've all been traumatized. Our children, our staff, our community. Lee County residents, though, love every one of you, you are resilient. I can see that by the many faces gathered here again today. Changed board time, moved it up, wanted to make sure we were respectful of traffic lights that are out, the traffic situation, the lack of water here in the building, and yet, you're here. And to me, that's a great sense of comfort. My board members are here, and they're attending by phone because they couldn't be here. They did what we're going to have to do in this community. They arranged to pick each other up, because some members no longer have cars. Nobody in this room has been immune, and we have to respect that, honor it, and understand that while we were individually impacted, this community has been traumatized. But it is not the end of the story of this amazing county and the great people who live here. And it won't be the end of the story of the school district of Lee County. I know this will be a challenging time for all of us. We will recover, and our community and our schools will be stronger than ever. I sincerely hope that our students, families, and community members are finding themselves in incrementally better situations as the days pass, because incremental progress is progress. Despite the challenges we are all experiencing, please know that this school district is here with you amongst this disaster, and we will remain with you until we return back to a new sense of normalcy. We are incredibly fortunate to live in a generous, caring community and state. School districts and organizations within the state and around the nation have reached out, asking how they may assist. If I started to name all the districts that have reached out to me in the past four days, it would be exhaustive, and I honestly believe it would include all 67. Recently, we had Broward strike teams of 20 apiece arrive shortly after the storm to help support our shelter operations. The community needs to know that we still have two shelters continuing to operate. One at Ray V. Podorf with special needs, and the other at South Fort Myers with a growing population of about 2,500. I live on the glide path now for the Black Hawk helicopters that are still rescuing people from our outer islands. From my home, I can judge whether they're landing at South Fort Myers High School or whether they're landing in the other location over by Hammond. Everyone landing on South Fort Myers football field is a rescue. The ones landing in the other location are a recovery. I am sad to report last evening that I heard many more landing in the recovery zone than in the rescue zone. The impact of this storm is not over. We are still in the midst of the aftermath. But despite all of that, the team that you see gathered in this room and the people they represent have been hard at work the Thursday before the storm even hit. We entered our own emergency operation system at that point, and we guided our district through Saturday, and with the EOC at the county level's support, we opened school on Monday, but were prepared to close on Tuesday, because we knew we could get the students there, but we didn't think we could get them home safely based upon the predicted winds. I can tell you that our board members never flinched. They supported the safety of our students, and they knew also that by getting our students home, we would be able to open our shelters. The team prior to that opening worked extremely hard to ensure that when the call came, the school district was ready. All of our shelters opened with a five-day food supply, the water necessary to guide us through the storm, water on order and being delivered to the Lee Civic Center for distribution after the storm passed. Our administrators, staff, and teachers responded. Food service workers, custodians, came to the call at the height of the storm, including the EOC shelters at Astero Rec Center and at Hertz Arena. We housed about 26,000 to 27,000 citizens of this district in our shelters. The storm may have passed, but the damage that's left behind is still present. So tomorrow, in partnership with Miami Dade Public Schools, the school district of Lee County will be hosting a food distribution event from 12:30 to 2:30 here at this building. Students, staff, and our community are invited to drive through the parking lot here on Colonial Boulevard, where our staff and our board members will join us in helping to continue to distribute food and water to our community. We will continue our efforts to reach out to our staff, students, and families, and we actively work in support of all recovery efforts. I am pleased to report that about 99% of our staff have been accounted for and contacted. This coming week, we are going to put out an additional survey to our staff, which is called a staff check-in. I want to be clear, this is not a readiness-for-work survey. This is a staff check-in. Where are you? What's going on? What do you need? How have you been impacted? How can we help? We are going to find that our staff is in multiple locations at this point. One of the last people I had tracked down was a member of my executive cabinet, who in the midst of flooding, I believe, lost their cellphone to the water. They're in Atlanta, and I got the phone call from a new phone number, I believe, because they purchased new cellphones upon arriving. I was happy to know a member of the executive cabinet was safe. Everyone has those stories. What we need now to know is where our teachers are at, what their conditions are, and how we can be of assistance. This is not the first time we've contacted them. Our principals have been in contact with them consistently. And yesterday at South Fort Myers High School, as we stayed into the night, we spoke with teachers who had already pulled their class rosters and were already proceeding to call down the phone numbers and contact those students that were in their care just a few short days ago. Those teachers will be aided by a survey to our parents as well, where we will select a student check-in survey. And we have operated with 211, United Way, so that those without connectivity but that get the text message can call 211 and have that survey filled out while they're on the phone. We're doing everything humanly possible to make sure we ensure that all of our staff and our students are safe. We began an assessment of our buildings this weekend with the fine and educated eye of professional educators. We realized that's not enough, but it was an initial way to make some determinations of how highly impacted our buildings were in the storm. We believe that we have some schools that with water and power, we will be ready to open. Others need minimal work, and some of our schools will require significant repairs, and some may have been damaged beyond repair. Building inspectors are now on-site. They came on Monday. Additional inspecting teams are arriving, and we expect to complete more comprehensive assessments before Thursday or on Thursday. But these are not easy assessments, because they must be conducted with the eye of safety for our staff and our students. They must be... They must be conducted in sensitivity with our community, and they have to be comprehensive. Additionally, our FEMA consultant, Imperium, is already on the ground, helping us to advise to ensure that as we do these assessments, we are doing the proper documentation necessary to have reimbursement. Vendors are also present, currently doing a thorough cleaning of our shelter sites, which are no longer occupied. Those will be completed by tomorrow. We have also begun to work on repairs at our school sites, including the removal of debris, in preparation for reopening. I would love to announce to you today that I have a hard day for the reopening of all of our schools. I do not. I can tell you with the support of the board, we will be proposing a tiered approach to return, where the school buildings that are available and can be utilized will be utilized. We will work with a timeframe and give the community an estimate on the most buildings that have been mediumly impacted. For the record, I don't believe "mediumly" is a word, but I, for the record, don't have it written down here. The difficulty will be in the hardest impacted school buildings, but I can commit to you as an educator, as a teacher, and as a principal, keeping those communities of learners together will be a vital part of how we respond. Normalcy in the midst of trauma is vital. Any sense of normalcy for those teachers and staff that are impacted because their school building may no longer exist must have the strength of each other to lean on in times of tragedy. So while we're in the midst of this historic event, all of us have been impacted, but this is not going to stop us from opening our schools. We know how essential our school and our schools are to our community. They educate our children. They allow our children to reach their fullest potential. They allow our community to go back to work and continue the economic engine of our community. My team has worked tirelessly to make sure that we reopen in a safe, sensitive, and effective manner. We are actively developing the plans for the damaged school sites to include relocation of students, teachers, and staff into portable classrooms located on other campuses and other locations where they would have access to working cafeterias, bathrooms, and gymnasiums. In some cases, our schools are fine to be reopened, but the gym room or the gym roof may have been pulled off. We can be at school safely in the classroom, but not in the gym. We can work around those things. We're educators. We've always done that. We've always worked around what we don't have. I have to explain to the community that I'm proud of the response of the Florida Department of Education to our needs. We now have a cadence set up with the Department of Education to meet with them every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday to utilize their resources and their connections. That creates valuable leverage to ensure that this district, this most impacted district from Ian, recovers. We are going to get back to normal. We will retrieve what Hurricane Ian tried to take away from us, and we will help move our children, family, staff, and our community forward. This process will be developmental and transitional. Where we have to shift, where we have to change a plan, we will, but we will get our schools reopen with and for this community. Last evening, I asked a Herculean task of a chief of staff who has done nothing but amazing work, and that was, hey, in the three hours we have tomorrow, maybe to not be working with FEMA, the EOC, our own EOC team, our maintenance, construction, our building inspectors, the people cleaning our buildings, can we put a short PowerPoint together that would allow the board and the community to capture the rhetoric that Dr. Birdie just provided and put some numbers and some facts and figures? So it is my pleasure to ask Michael Ramirez and Adam Malloy, my chief of staff and coordinator in the superintendent's office, power twins, to provide their report. We joke because we made this promise to ourselves. Despite all of the tragedy, it's important for us to laugh. It's how this team builds its resiliency. We have to have permission to be human. I'm proud of this entire team and this board for all the leadership you've provided, both before, during, and the leadership that will be provided after the storm. Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Dr. Brineer. Good afternoon, Chair Jordan.
It's on?
No, it's not on.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Brineer. Good afternoon, Chair Jordan, board members, General Counsel Dupree Bruno. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank each of you in our community for the, for the support, the tremendous output of support in this most challenging times for our district and our community. We know the impact of Hurricane Ian has had an enormous impact on our community, both physically and emotionally. So many have suffered great loss, and it's in these times that I've been reminded, and I think we all need to be reminded, how to extend compassion and grace to each other as we navigate. I'm thankful that my wife, my personal situation with my wife and my two girls, remained safe during the storm, and I'm just thankful for, to be here today. The purpose of this afternoon, as Dr. Brineer mentioned, was just to provide a brief overview of our district's recovery efforts. Just want to cover a couple of big pieces in our agenda. You'll see the update around our response, our recovery, what we're calling our status, both with people and with buildings, and some of our current thinking around reopening plans, knowing that this work is fluid, and as Dr. Brineer mentioned, transactional as well as we go through this process, and will provide some next steps. As Dr. Brineer mentioned, on Thursday prior to the storm, our teams worked with the Lee County Emergency Operations Center, our EOC team, and we continue to have representation there. During the storm, we mobilized 12 school shelters that were activated, and over the last five days, our shelters have been closed, and the remaining two, South Fort Myers High School and Ravy Potoff Elementary for our special needs center. We continue to have that representation at our EOC with our executive director of safety, Chief Newlin, and Candace Messenger, our director of food and nutrition services, currently serving at the EOC. Dr. Brineer has and will continue to provide updates to our school community via all media outlets. Recorded messages and live interviews continue to be a part of the day-to-day operations as we look. When we look to our response, our recovery, our school districts, our school district recovery team has been working around the clock, standing up communication systems, survey and protocols that have been supported to connect people, assessing buildings, and creating a needs assessment for both our people and our school buildings. Points of Distribution Center, you'll see the flyer as we're advertising the event for tomorrow that will be hosted here at this building, and we'll continue to do that. We're thankful to not only Miami Dade County Public Schools, but so many other districts across this state and across this country have reached out specifically around what that may look like. As we think about the status, we developed a communication matrix to check in. We began that checking process shortly after the storm. We have a check-in survey that began going out. It will be going out to families this evening. Our school leaders have been connecting with their staff, teachers and staff, and we have a protocol for school, teacher, and student, and we continue to have volunteer opportunities. We continue to sign up volunteers to serve as points of distribution and any other places that are available across. As we look to the status of our buildings, we have assessments. We currently have assessments, and we, as Dr. Brineer mentioned, we have a tiered support, low impact, medium, and high. About 50% of our school sites are deemed low impact. The however to that statement I would name is, these have been principal assessments who are not experts in this work. We observe classrooms, but not necessarily buildings and infrastructure. So this first preview of buildings has been done by our school leaders, and we have teams on the ground as of yesterday assessing our buildings and continuing to provide the status of that. So with 50%, we'll continue to work towards a reopening that is safe, sensible, and responsible as we think through what that would look like. We've been grounding, in Dr. Brineer's words, "safe, sensitive, and effective reopening." But we understand, I want you to know, that the commitment of Dr. Brineer and our executive team in our district, and we understand the importance of having our schools back open and online for our community, is one of the first steps to the truly getting back to a sense of normalcy and of healing. And our plans will continue to be developmental and transitional. We've had some conversation about a staggering reopening, and we'll continue to have and engage in those kind of conversations based on what buildings may be open, and we're looking at options for high-impacted schools, learning models, relocations. All options are on the table, and we're brainstorming with not only folks within our district but outside of our district that have been so instrumental in other places in recovery. I mentioned Bay County Schools, Dr. Brineer mentioned that, who's been a tremendous partner. We had a call with them this morning, just sharing some of their lessons learned from Hurricane Michael. No relation, but, but really just brainstorming and really sharing best practices. We have support from Miami Dade County Public Schools, Strategic Operations, folks that have been here, and it's just been a tremendous, we're looking at reopening, and all options are on the table, but again, in a manner that's safe, sensible, and effective. We have numbers that we can share as well around what the impacted, but at this point, we know about 50% of our schools are at a point where we're identifying the low impact to see what we can do to begin the process of reopening. Community partners in recovery, we've identified, the Emergency Relief Fund has been set up by district partners, the Collaboratory and the United Way. This relief fund will support comprehensive United Way resources through programs and organizations. The Foundation for Lee County Public Schools has established a relief fund as well, and those are the two places where we've identified and actually put out information around community members and those around, not only locally, but around the state and around the country that want to contribute to those relief efforts. And just wanted to take a moment just to thank some of our partners that have actually been here, boots on the ground or through Zoom supporting, and there's so many more that we can name. And it's so encouraging to have partners, school districts, and colleagues that become family, not only around the state but around the country, that upon the recovery of the storm, reached out, called, texted, and just said, "We're here, how can I help?" And they've shown it not only in their words, but in their actions, and as Dr. Brineer mentioned, that list will continue to grow, and we could have so many more, but those are a few of the partners that have been here. Our next steps are to really make an operational decision. Our commitment as an executive team through Dr. Brineer's direction is to have some type of operational decision by Thursday of this week, by close of day Thursday, at least to what will happen next week, and that's the commitment. At this point, I'll turn it back over to our superintendent for any additional comments and in board discussion.
Just a couple of quick ads. As you look at some of those photographs, and I hope you'll come back to some of those slides because we left them specifically vague so we could go back to numbers and show those photographs again.
Go back.
When you see the water lines in some of these school buildings represented on the bottom picture on Slide 7, that's not the high line. That's the first settlement line. That's first, that's the first time the tide surged and then settled inside of this particular school. I believe this photograph was taken at Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. When Tracy and I landed in the helicopter, we went into the school building, and we realized very quickly that the water had gone over the top of the building. And what you see represented there is one of the first settlement lines as the water retreated. Sanibel faced some of the same heights. I will tell you that describing the picture in the middle of the office, that's the offices of the school building. In the first broken piece of wall, that's the faculty lounge, where I found tables and refrigerators overturned. I never got Adam the photograph, but on top of the shelf, there was a straw sombrero that never moved. There was a small cardboard popcorn cup that was still in place, and yet, when we looked to look for furniture that belonged to the principal, it was no longer in the building. The randomness of that originally was what I thought, and then I began to believe that there is two things at foot here. What you're seeing in front of you today is what's above the waterline, the calm, the rational approach, the calm speech. But in every individual in this community, there is still the turbulence going on below the waterline. So as we react with each other and as we talk with each other, we need to be sensitive to each other's experiences because they are all different. So at this point, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to the board for additional questions, and so that we may continue to inform the community as to our process and the information that we've gathered to this point about the status of our buildings, and more importantly, our people and our staff and our students.
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentation, and I know that this is just, just a mere view of what we have not seen, and those are probably the better pictures that we would not want to, I mean, there's other ones that are out there that we know are so much worse than what we're looking at right now. But I did also want to say, you know, I really appreciate how everyone has stepped up and reached out to us, and also with saying that, I did not want it to leave out the chairs of the FSBA, who has continuously reached out to all of us, the other chairs and the other 67 districts of board members and people who have reached out to us as well to, to ask if we're okay, to, you know, check on us, to see what we needed. So it goes well beyond Lee County, as Dr. Brineer has mentioned and say with Mr. Ramirez. So I just want to really thank, thank you all, and really appreciate everyone in this and what we're going to go through for some time now. Are there any questions that, and I know we all have questions, Ms. Kittens? Are there any questions that, and I know we all have questions, Ms. Kittens?
Thank you. Okay, you said earlier, Dr. Bernier, that we have to look at something to laugh at. As I look down there, I can't see me, so. So I'll use my phone so you know that it's me that's talking. Anyway, the video, I mean, the PowerPoint, will that be added to Board Docs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I have some other things, but I'll save them until later. Thank you.
So my initial questions are, I have about half a dozen here, and I don't need answers right now, if I may, through the chair.
Yes, please.
But if you could get them to me and to the board over the next week or so as we're making these reopening decisions, I'd really appreciate it. Is there an anticipated end date to our declared state of emergency? And when I say a date, I don't mean a date. I mean a phase of operations. At what point in our reopening do you anticipate that ending? Have our TPG cultural exchange teachers been included in the outreach that we are doing? The FEMA consultant that you mentioned, Imperium, do they have former FEMA employees on staff? When you talk about a tiered approach, what does that look like? A little bit more detail there would be helpful for me to be fully supportive. Are we talking about different academic calendars for different schools? Are we talking about, I hate to say these words out loud, but it is what Charlotte did after Hurricane Charlie, double sessions? Are we looking at that as a possibility? I know you said all possibilities are on the table. How realistic is that? As I ask these questions, I want you to understand that I have a concept of the logistical nightmares that we're dealing with. Me getting to this building today took double the amount of time it would normally take. So I understand that it's not just about schools being safe. It's about getting students and employees into those buildings as well. Relief funds, who receives those resources? So if I go to the foundation, for example, and I give there, can I be assured that that money is going to go to our staff or our students? How can I know where that money is going to go so that the public can direct their resources and their help where they want it to be directed? And then in terms of like our contracts with vendors, are we operating under some kind of an emergency or disaster relief clause in our contracts? How exactly does that work during a time of a declared state of emergency? Those are my questions and I have a lot of comments, but I can save those for the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board Member Patrico. When you talk about working under a state of emergency or talking, I just have a clarification question to answer correctly. Are you talking about the governments, the governors, or my declared state of emergency? Because the hurricane is still continuing and the response to the hurricaneion is still continuing, I believe by our next board meeting, we will, before our next board meeting, I will ask for the emergency powers to be removed from the superintendent and returned back to the board so that our next board meeting, we are doing anything moving forward at that point related to contracts, related to any type of emergency, to building, towards reconstruction, all of that will return to its normal processes. The only thing I am doing at this point is ensuring that our FEMA representatives are being paid so that we can be on target, having the right documentation to be reimbursed. I am pushing forward on the cleaning of our schools, the inspection of our schools, and whatever we can do to get our schools start to be opened. But we will start and I will rescind those powers for myself. Thank all of you for the opportunity. When I called you that day, to the one of you, you understood exactly why I was asking it. And I appreciate your willingness to listen to my angst about asking for it. It was not an easy ask, but I knew I had to. So that should end at the next board meeting we return. In terms of TPG, all staff members have been contacted. TPG would have been part of that same process for those teachers, for instance, that work at Harms Marsh Middle. Alex reached out to everyone because everyone's part of the Harms Marsh family. I can't say specifically yet what TPG is doing on behalf of those employees yet. And I will find that out for you. We will make sure that is provided in a board update. In terms of Imperium, they have great experience. I will tell you that with Bay County, when we mentioned the name today, they got a big grin on their face because they knew we had picked a good firm. That firm was picked prior to Ian. It's not something new to us. We already had them on board. All we had to do was activate their contract. But I will get you very specific information as to whether any of the staff specifically has former FEMA experience. A tiered approach. I have to remember my words. This is a transitional and developmental process. Those are words to say, "We are considering all options." I think as we explore maybe the 50% of the buildings that are in good shape, I think you will be surprised to find out how many of our high schools are in really amazing shape. They've done well. There are parts that don't look pretty anymore, but we believe them to be sound and will know more in the coming days. That being said, we may have to consider some unique scheduling. And it's not just double sessions as we look at our middles and some of our elementaries. Additionally, what we mean about a tiered approach is it will take time. If we keep these community of learners together, we are going to need the help, support of the district and the state Department of Education to determine where we can keep these people together. Our goal, for instance, could be that we could use the property, for instance, at Cypress Lake Middle School that was slated to build the new middle school upon, and then they would raise the former building. We could put that construction project on hold and use that property to put in a portable field that could house the Sanibel School. That would allow them to then use Cypress Lakes Cafeteria and other facilities. Those are the types of ideas we have. In the community engagement process and the town hall meetings, I think I got this across pretty carefully and well. We have ideas. We do not yet have a formulated plan because we have to know what we can open before we can know what else we additionally need to do. So that will come in stages and we will continue. And we will get your thoughts and your processes on that. This will not be a unilateral decision. We will be able to sit down with you individually and make sure we can explain that to you. Relief funds, I can speak to where the relief funds for the foundation will go. Marshall Bauer and I have had a conversation again today. The money donated specifically to the School District of Lee County will be available to the School District of Lee County. As to the other funds, the Southwest Florida Fund, United Way, the Red Cross, I tell people to give where your heart is. What you choose to give is where you choose to give. But I don't know how those funds or if those funds will circle back to the School District of Lee County. What I do know is money placed in the foundation will. I also spoke to Marshall today about some specifics related to some additional funding accounts within the foundation that may need to be developed specifically as donors are interested in Fort Myers Beach Elementary and the Sanibel School and helping with costs associated with either repairing or rebuilding those buildings. So I think that's the best I can do in relief fund. And then the vendors piece, I would like to research a little bit further. I know what you're asking. These vendors are specifically people we've had on standby that we are using. But we are expanding our number of vendors because in order to get 50% of our schools cleaned and ready to go, I can't do that with a team of five teams. We need as many teams as we can get. And what I shared with our EOC team before I left is we are driving the schedule to return. It's up to our vendors to respond with the numbers that we need. If you can only get me three teams, I'll take it. But then I'm moving on to another vendor for another three or another four or another two. Because the more teams we have, the faster we're going to be able to complete the work. In terms of any other additional information, we'll keep all these questions. Make sure we respond to all of them.
Thank you. Thank you. I did want to say, Ms. Javonelli is, Ms. Javonelli, you are online, correct? Ms. Javonelli, are you here with us? Looks at. We'll see if she's, is she with us? Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue. I believe that she is on and off at the moment. Ms. Vaughn, and then I'll come back to Ms. Kittens.
First of all, I would just like to compliment Dr. Bernier on his words. I feel that they were truly inspirational and hopefully, I mean, you know, it's no secret that there have been, let's say, differences of opinion among school board members, among us, among constituents to the district, et cetera. And I'm not saying that these differences should be completely stifled, but certainly this is a time to be very circumspect in the things that we bring up. And that anything that's brought up that might sound somewhat critical would be only in trying to be helpful and trying to brainstorm and maybe not said in the best way. But there are a lot of you out there that know things because you were in the middle of the hurricane and you know your individual communities that you will have other comments. And thank you also to the two gentlemen here for your report pulled together very nicely and quickly. One of the questions I had is teachers, especially elementary, but no, not just elementary, because I know I have a lot of stuff in my room from all my years of teaching, my own personal libraries, all of my teaching notes and lesson plans and all of that. Will there be an opportunity for teachers to get into their classrooms somehow? Will that be up to the individual rooms? I know that those on Sanibel, that might be an impossibility. One of our golden apple teachers, Mr. Campertero, in the past, observed his classroom. And just thinking about that one room there in Sanibel and all the amazing things he had set up. And then you multiply it by all the elementary rooms, but I'm using him as an example since that was in one of our decimated schools. Will there be some kind of opportunity for teachers, especially in the schools that have the higher impacts, to at least try to remove some personal belongings and see if any of their, I mean, I had files that if this had happened to me and one of my files that I had added to for a dozen years was ruined, I'd be devastated. So will there be that opportunity to do it safely?
Thank you for that question. Ms. Vaughn and Dr. Bernier, just so you are aware, we do have one of our Sanibel teachers are here currently in the room. So that was a question.
Sanibel.
Sanibel School, Fort Myers Elementary. If we can get the opportunity, we would certainly provide it. However, I'm going to be candid and realistic. When a storm surge goes through a building taller than I am, the files that you're speaking about, the books, the belongings, by the time we get to them, we'll not be in a condition where we could take them. A golden apple is potentially a retrievable object if it's still there. But the access to the outer islands, to our barrier islands, is going to be up to people well beyond me. And it won't be easy. I was able to get the principals through the gift of the sheriff's office helicopters out to the barrier islands, to Pine Island, to Sanibel and to Fort Myers Beach Elementary. Until such time as those barrier islands have better access, we will have to wait. And the longer we wait, the more damage that will occur because that water is going to continue to do what it does. And we all have to remember that as water goes through a school building, water's bad enough, saltwater is even worse. So there are days ahead where our teachers will mourn, clearly mourn what they've lost. Ms. Vaughn, I'm an educator as well. I can think of some things that were in my classrooms that I would want back. I was able to give that gift to the principals, but I'm not sure we're going to be able to provide that gift to everyone.
Yeah, now, I realize that. And at least today, unlike many of my teaching years, we tend to have everything backed up on computers. But there are those little, those little things. And maybe even a Sanibel room or Fort Myers Beach room will have a straw sombrero somewhere up on a high shelf. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. That was just interesting that you said that because that's exactly the conversation that I had prior to this meeting with someone. So thank you for that. Ms. Kittens?
Yes, I love the sombrero area and having an artifacts-type situation.
Just one thing.
Yeah. So I have two questions. And Superintendent, you mentioned in answering Ms. Patrico's question about the executive power. And if you don't mind to very simplistically let the public know and understand what that's about. I'm not sure everyone really understands how that process works and when it works and all of that. So if you could take that. And then my second question is, is there a plan, not a time, but a plan for the handoff of our last two shelters to potentially the county? And especially since they are so critical at this point? And how that fits into our plan for reopening as well? Because from what I understand, especially at South, there's going to be significant need for refurbishing and getting it back up to speed. So that's my two questions right now.
Madam Chair, Board Member Kittens, they're both excellent. Emergency powers in a simple way is memorandums that in a declaration of emergency like we were under as Hurricaneian approached, gave me the opportunity to express to the board that I would need emergency powers to go ahead and execute on purchases and other things that we would need outside of the normal processes of bringing them to board approval. There's a very strict spending limit related to purchase a superintendent and their staff can make, and that's items under $50,000. When you think about recovering nearly 100-plus school buildings and contracting services to clean, just cleaning out our shelters, steam cleaning the rugs from being pet-friendly, taking care of when we lost water and water pressure. I won't go into the details of what, some of what occurred within the shelters when you lose public facilities. you lose public facilities and restrooms. There's significant expense with refurbishing those buildings. I could not wait till next, for another two weeks, to have the ability to contract with vendors to go in and clean those. So in short, it's an executive privilege that is provided to a superintendent under very rare and very special circumstances. I could have done that on Monday. I chose not to. I chose to wait till we were 100% sure the storm was coming aboard. We didn't expect it to get where it came to. We were still hoping, when I talked to all of you, that it would bypass us instead of sit over the top of us for several hours. So that's just, that's just a simple explanation. I'll stop there before I go onto the shelter. You said, is that enough?
Oh, no, that was fine. I just, I, I know sometimes we say things and, and the public is not really aware what that means in a simplistic language, so that's why I brought that out.
Yes, ma'am. The collaboration with the emergency management group at the county office, the EOC, has been nothing but fabulous. There's been great communication between all of us, Roger Djarlais, the county commissioners, the police department, the EMTs, the logistics people, the people who helped us get DOT, who helped us get fuel to our generators. Just want to recognize a lot of work that goes on in that world. I was lucky enough on many days and nights to spend time there as I relieved Dave Newland. We set up shop as a small, little SDLC group in the corner of the cafeteria. It's where we could sit, but we had Wi-Fi and connectivity at times when many people did not. And it allowed us to work ahead of the schedule and to begin to put our plans together, contacting fellow superintendents, contacting each other, and begin, begin to execute on a recovery plan. As to the two shelters, both Ravy Potorf and South Fort Myers, I'll start with South Fort Myers. South Fort Myers is currently housing just over 2,000 people. They are doing amazing work. That shelter has been moved into the control of the Red Cross, meaning we have been relieved from the shelter aspect of the duties in that building. However, that still means an administrator or a set of administrators, as were there last night, are still responsible for the building. We are allowing somebody to be a guest in our home, if you would like me to explain it simply. The guest is being watched by someone else, but it is still our home. And I would like to credit now Ed Matthews, his team, all of the shelter principals for the work that they did. It was incredible. And again, as I said, they housed almost, in our own shelters, just under 25,000, but total in the whole school, total in the whole county, where nearly 27,000 at the time of the storm. The handoff there, South Fort Myers, has been discussed at the EOC. The EOC at the county level is the one who determines when shelters open. The EOC is the one who determines when shelters consolidate. So we went through the first consolidation where we closed shelters and individuals still in the shelters were moved to the Hertz Arena under the care of Red Cross. South Fort Myers is being held right now because it's still an active reception area for those individuals still being rescued from the islands. So there is been some talk of consolidating that shelter, but as of the last EOC call, it did not come up in our direct conversation, but Dave Newland has been consistently talking with us. I'm not sure if Mr. Ramirez has an update. No, he does not. So the last we left of that was with Mr. Newland this morning. It was being openly discussed, a consolidation of that shelter, but it has not yet been communicated to us that that's a go. When that happens, they pick a particular time, usually 1:00 in the afternoon, and then LiTran, transportation system, arrives and they begin to take those individuals and begin to transport them to their new location. Ravy Potorf is a special needs shelter. We have people on oxygen, we have people on ventilators. These are people with very highly specific needs. Brandy Mackia also needs to be credited for the work she's doing. She does call it the Potorf Resort. We're not quite five stars yet, but they have done finger painting, they've done bingo, they had karaoke night. I went in on Sunday, they were in the midst of a church service. She has done amazing work and I have to tell you, refuses to leave. She just, she's in it for the long haul and will stay there. When Glades County came to help and support, I told the individuals who are being divided up to go to Ravy Potorf, I said, "Under no circumstances do you talk to Brandy about leaving. It's a waste of your energy. Go in and start talking to other people, stop helping her get clean, start making the new meal, and she'll be thrilled that you're there." That one is more difficult because those individuals have to be transported back to facilities which can care for them. In some cases, their facilities were impacted and they are no longer operational. So again, the EOC, the emergency medical teams within the EOC are looking for the opportunity to slowly pare down those numbers. And for the community, that's another piece of the onion for reopening. You know, those are buildings that are viable for our children, but right now they are serving a very humanitarian purpose. And until such time as the county, as long as the county wants them, we're going to be a good partner with our county because we want those citizens to be taken care of. So that's another piece of the onion as we think about reopening that, that it, we always think about the school and the condition of the school. We have to think about, are the schools available? Are they still shelters? Do our teachers now have cars to drive to work? There's, there's been significant complication and that's why that staff check-in is going to occur this week. Because we start to have to get an idea of, even if we open, can our people come back? And if they're far away, how quickly can they get back? So it's just a check-in and it gives the principals some more information to continue their dialogues with their staff. So those are the plans for the two shelters as well.
Thank you. I have one more, can I? Okay, and the last one, I was contacted by some people out of state that are wondering, excuse me, about if this is not going to end up being like the beginning of school where students need supplies and teachers need supplies for, I mean, even paper and pencil they asked me about. So I don't know if we have that in other areas or if we, one of my thoughts was the schools that were really highly damaged, those students, as opposed to like, you know, doing an all-out for everyone, because more than likely they would need like backpacks and paper and pencils and stuff. So can you address that through the chair, please? Thank you.
I can. We are working with community services. We're working with the Salvation Army, we are working with the United Way. I'm afraid I'm going to leave somebody out. But we're working with, with a number of different people. The United Way is certainly the 2-1-1 line for the people listening, or using the United Way would be the appropriate place for them to make initial contact on those types of things. They have the warehousing and the ability to hold on to that. We do not. And then we can pull those supplies back into school buildings for regional, regional dispersion when, distribution when we come back to school. Then on top of that, I will share with you, I've been contacted by school districts in New Jersey. They're now currently hosting fundraisers to provide money to the foundation specifically on the idea of replacing teacher libraries and other things that people lost within their classrooms. There's school districts in Cleveland and in Denver and in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Clark County, Nevada, has also responded. And they are either responding with dollars or they're waiting until such a time as we green light them to say, "Begin to collect your supplies on your side and when we're ready, please send them to us and then we will, we will become a distribution site for those supplies so our children are ready to come back."
Thank you. And this group is from California, so I add California to your list.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Morgan, did you have any questions or?
I'll save mine for the end.
Okay. Ms. Javonelli?
Thank you, all board members. I thought you did a terrific job covering everything.
There's been a lot, that's for sure. Ms. Javonelli, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you. I just want to make sure that we're not leaving you out. So you have to speak softly. Do you have any, do you have any questions?
I do. That's a little hard for me to speak softly, y'all know that.
I know, but we're going to ask you to do so. Lower your voice. No, go ahead. Inside voice. Go ahead, Ms. Javonelli.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions. First of all, just thank you to everyone and staff and everything, because I know that they've been working night and day to get where we are today. But I am concerned because we have parents already, many people are already back to work and students need to be in school. And that's really our primary, primary job and focus. Yes, I, I believe we need to be, you know, partners with our, our community and, and I'm more than willing to do that, but, you know, I am concerned that we need to get our students in school. My questions really are, Ms. Patrico mentioned one regarding double sessions. I am interested in, in knowing more about that aspect to get our schools open, if that is the need for some of the schools that are, and teachers and staff and students that are displaced primarily from our three coastal schools. But like, we, I think we have like 121 schools. How many schools could open next week with no issues, no real issues? And how many really cannot? What are those numbers exactly? Besides the three schools that we know that cannot be, that are inoperable? You know, do we know what like other, like the private schools are doing? Like Barrow, Canterbury, and SFCA as well as like the other, any other charter schools? Are any of them ready to open? I think that it's really important for parents to be able to have their children in a safe place going to school. So I understand the safety of that. One of the other things I was curious is, did, in preparation for the hurricane at all, did we shutter any schools or, you know, prep to protect any schools and any things, any of the things inside the school? I don't even know if we have shutters, but I was just curious about that myself. I, I just want to express how important it is that to get back to normalcy, what is normal is for kids to be in school. And so the sooner we do that, the better for everyone, even the community. And I'm concerned over the costs that we would have to pay if we delay for any length of time with possible summer school, our school all year long, the learning losses, you know, and we're already behind with the pandemic of the learning losses. So I just really want to express that if we can open schools, we need to do so. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Javonelli. Yes, sir.
Ms. Javonelli, your superintendent, your staff would echo your sentiments that we would like to get school open as quickly as possible. We also believe that it is a proper place and the right place for our children to be. It provides them opportunities to continue to learn and reach their full potentials while providing parents the opportunity to go back to work, which in turn either continues to support this economy or allows them to begin to raise the dollars necessary to make the repairs to their homes or to make other decisions related to their living conditions. There is no disalignment between your expectations and ours. Before I go to Michael with numbers, I will share with you that the most important thing we know is if we do go with a staged approach, there will be skilled buildings that will be open and there will be school buildings that are not. And what I've talked about, that is a gap. That's a gap between the students who are back in school and the students who are not because their buildings are not ready yet. Academic services are hard at work determining what that gap looks like. I know from watching from afar that words like pivot and hybrid and all those other great words that got ruined in the English language during the COVID process are not what we're talking about. We are talking about opportunities for students and teachers to be together. They may be in unconventional areas, but we will find a way to shorten that gap as quickly as possible. As to whether the schools are ready for Monday morning or not, we believe we might have some, but we have to wait for the independent certified building inspections to be complete. Again, what we have now is a cursory review conducted by educators. We know our limitations. We are not building engineers. And we also need to know and protect the finances of this community to ensure that the school buildings are inspected appropriately so any damage is properly documented and FEMA would then reimburse us over a period of time. I caution this community for any quick expectation on a FEMA reimbursement. We were talking to Bay County today. Michael, they are still waiting for aspects of their FEMA reimbursement even as we speak this afternoon. I can tell you that my understanding is we have no shutters for our building. The damage that occurred to our school buildings was not shutter-type damage. Entire roofs were removed. That's not a shuttering issue. And I will share with you, the pictures of Fort Myers Beach are telling. We lost walls, but the hurricane window stayed intact. It is, it, it's another one of those straw sombreros that just amazes me that a concrete wall can collapse, but a hurricane window will stay in its frame and not be broken. So I don't believe, but our insurance experts are on the ground as well. We are insured for our buildings by about 13 different insurance companies, all under the watchful eye of one particular agent who's already been on the ground with us as well. And we will make sure that if there are additional lessons to be learned, we will use those lessons appropriately. And before I go back to Michael again for some numbers from buildings, our calendar situation, there's been two really great conversations, well, many conversations, but there's been two really great questions answered by the commissioner of Ed. We are approaching October FTE Week. FTE stands for Full-Time Equivalency. That doesn't help most of the general public. What that means is it's our funding week. We get paid based upon the number of students that we can account for during that week who actually come and take a seat in one of our school buildings during that particular day, during that particular week. We have been told that the Department of Education will work with us for a date certain prior to the hurricane where they will give us credit for that enrollment at that time. Because it is likely, even if we are open with some of our sites, we will not be open with all of our students present. And we also have to be prepared, we may open with less students than we had before the hurricane. As a former principal in Orlando, when Orlando, when Orlando took in the sheltering of the students coming from Homestead as Andrew approached, I will tell you, those students did not return to Homestead. They stayed in Orlando and registered. I did have a great conversation with the gentleman responsible for rebuilding Miami-Dade following that and the school buildings that were impacted. He has been here of his own time on Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I don't believe he went home last night, where he's going to be back again tomorrow helping us with the food distribution. He's been invaluable thought partner for both my chief of staff and myself. So that's one good news. The other thing we've talked about with the commissioner and his staff is a calendar. We don't know about a calendar yet because we don't have children back in school yet. So we are going to be putting a recommendation of a calendar on this commissioner's desk. His staff will then work with us to make some determinations about what our school schedule will look like. I do not know, but we will find out what the private schools and the other small schools are doing. But I remind you, they are getting one school building ready and that is a bit easier. I don't think our parents would like it if we had a K-12 school large enough to fit 100,000 students. I think there's real advantages to neighborhood schools. But if I only had one school building, I believe this process could be infinitely easier. But I hear what you're saying, that we ought to be looking at what some of our other school buildings in this school district that are not public schools are doing and we will do due diligence in that manner. I will turn it over to my chief of staff to have a conversation with you related to your question about the numbers of schools.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bernier. And I would share, I would share, as I shared earlier, around 50% of our schools, those actual numbers, and I would caution us to say, the numbers are fluid and we have folks on the ground right now as we speak, so you'll, you'll see numbers may go from low to medium or medium to low. But currently, as we speak, we've identified 43 of our school buildings that we've identified as a low need. And some work, obviously, depending on what inspectors come back today, but we've identified 43 at the low, 29 at the medium level need, and 14 at the high level. And as I shared, those numbers do fluctuate and we are real time, as we're sitting here, getting updates and we are... getting updates and we are asking in these updates of inspectors of our own maintenance staff, is the building ready to open? That doesn't mean, it may not be projects that would continue to happen as students are in the building, but can we open in a manner that is safe for students to be in the building? So those, and by tomorrow, by tomorrow end of day, we would have, we would have had eyes and had these inspectors in all of our, all 43 low need schools. We actually also have a plan that will be enacting by Thursday while having teams from several counties come to assist in the medium need in addition to obviously professionals in our high need. So we have that plan so that we are able to assess, but by end of day tomorrow, we'd be able to assess. And immediately after this board meeting, we're going to be going school by school with those 43, current state, all working towards what we can share for Thursday around what our plans would be potentially for next week. But right now, so 43 at the low, 29 at the medium need, and 14 currently at the high. And the needs fluctuate. Some of it is extensive debris in, in the, in the medium need, some of it is roof damage. So it just depends, and these are just either visual principals walking or we've had the opportunity through technology with drones to actually look at some of the buildings and have an idea of what roof damage may look like.
Okay. And, and also, Dr. Bernier, if you can also, and I hear what Ms. Givinelli's saying as well, but I think that we also have to remember too, there are still lines down on, and I know she's not here yet, but there are lines down on the road. There's such huge matters of debris everywhere. For us to have buses on the streets, our kids standing on the street waiting for a bus, and just, and even power, just everything else that is part of getting the schools open, that's something else that you all are looking at, correct? I mean, we're trying to consult, I mean, it's, it's much broader than just the building. It's the property. It's everything around it.
It's the property. Well, it's people. This is a people business. And when I say people, I mean everything from kindergarten to K-12, to 12th grade students. It's about the teachers who work with them, the paraprofessionals, the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the custodians, the principals. It doesn't matter what your pay grade is or what your grade level is. People have been impacted. And that's a continuum of impact. Some people who've lived in multimillion dollar homes have nothing. They've never experienced this level of having to curl up in a shelter because they don't live around family and community. Or they were picked off an island with nothing other than what they were wearing. So yes, it's complicated, but it starts with people. The next piece of our complication is people need to get to school buildings. So the community will see over the next couple of days, buses moving in our community. We are doing some road assessment. We're working with the EOC Center and LITRAN to understand some places that are completely impassable. But buses, like every piece of machinery needs, need, for lack of a better term, need to be exercised. It also gives us an opportunity to begin to determine our readiness and our bus drivers and their ability to return to back, return back to work as well. So we're calling them back, asking them to do some routine things by checking their routes, doing other things. But you're correct. It's, it's teachers without cars. It's teachers without homes. It's students without homes. It's families without cars. It's, no, again, everybody's been impacted, but we've all been impacted at different levels. And it knows, it knows no socioeconomic impact. Ian, Ian didn't care if you were wealthy or you were poor. It, it, if you were in its path, it treated you with equality. And it's our job to figure out how we can do that. And we have principals without homes. I mean, it, it, this has been a significant impact to all of us. And I just, I just ask for the community to continue to see that maybe their building outside their window or around the corner looks great. That is not the situation across the entire community. You might drive by a school building and say, that looks perfectly fine. But what you're missing is the 10-foot tide surge that went through it. After the tide surge went over Fort Myers Beach, continued across the bay and kept coming. So I'm just asking for, there's three reminders in my planner. I said it in my interview. I read them again this morning. The post-it note's getting old and worn. I probably should rewrite it, but it's a reminder. Patience, patient, poised and professional. That's what we're going to need for a little bit of more time. We're going to need all of those things. We're going to need to be patient. We're going to need to stay poised in our relationships with each other and our community and our EOCs and, and the other, the other members of this community. We're going to have to remain in professional relationships, respect each other's positions and move forward. To Ms. Patricca's point, I moved to a specific neighborhood because I wanted a less than 15-minute commute to this building and to be centralized so I could get to any part of this community. It is taking me 45 minutes to get to work. Those are significant things that have to be corrected before a safe, safe, sensible and effective reopening can materialize.
Thank you. Ms. Givinelli, did you have any other questions before I move on to Ms. Vaughn?
I do, real quick.
Go ahead, please.
So I am confident in the next week or so, the local, our local commissioners and government will have the, have our community pretty much back in order except for those outlying coastal areas that were hard hit. And I'm my very, I'm very concerned because I know many people have already gone back to work. And we are in the business to educate children. I don't want to be insensitive, but I have to be sensitive to educating children and the, the cost of that and the, and the value of that is very significant and important to me as well as I think the board members. I think we can reach out and help each one as a need for our teachers. And that would be where I would focus right now is getting our teachers in a place where they can work because we've already, our, our local community is already going back to work. And we're going to, we're going to either have to provide childcare if we're not going to educate their children because, and we're not in the business to have childcare services. So I don't want to sound insensitive, but that is really our job and what we're elected to do. So I will stay focused on that. There's rumors out there that schools aren't going to open in January. Well, I'm here to say that that is not a true rumor and I will never stand behind us being closed until that time. I will be pushing for schools to be open. You named 86 schools that are low need, medium need and high need. There's still 35 schools that, that don't meet any of those needs. So I'm assuming they're ready to go. So I really want to focus on getting our, our students in school and, because that's, like I said, that's what's normal and that's what's going to move this community along. If we have children that are at home and parents can't work, that will cost us more than we, what we can even imagine. That will hurt our community. So I appreciate everyone and the jobs they're doing and I appreciate this board. I know that we will move this community along and our school district along to educating children. Thank you.
Dr. Bernier, do you want to respond? Okay, thank you. And as you said, that is a rumor that has never been stated at all. And I will tell you FEMA, and I have been working at the 211 call center, FEMA is bringing the people, they are the ones who are cleaning our streets. So there's a lot of moving parts that are taking place here that unless you are physically on the ground and seeing what is taking place, it is hard to speak on. And I do appreciate what you're saying because we absolutely want to make sure that we get our kids back to school and return back to normal, whatever that looks like. But we want to make sure that we're doing it again in a safe manner. And I apologize, Ms. Vaughn, because I know you had your hand up. So please, please, your comments. I apologize.
Well, I thought I could get through this meeting without saying anything semi-political. However, that's not, not to be. I have, I'm a bit of a news junkie everywhere from reading New York Times, which had a very, very interesting article about Lee County and preparations. I won't talk more about that at this point. As you well know, I was in, I was a teacher for many years. I have been around to a lot of different school districts, know people around the country. First of all, I'm going to say that the tiered approach is not terribly unusual. I've talked to Dr. Bernier about this. A very close friend of mine was teaching in Houston when that city and the surrounding area was flooded, I think it was, was it Harvey? I think was, okay. And she taught in Cypress Fairbanks. Cyfair, like Lee County, is a huge school district. She said it took about a month for the first round of schools to get back into session. And then little by little, they opened the others. And she talked about, when we, when she and I chatted about her experience, that it was the same as we're talking about now because with the flooding, so many people are displaced. And so you may have kids that maybe were in a zone where they were going to a school that was not very affected, but they had to get out of their own home and now they're living 25 miles on the other end of the county. The same with the teachers. And, and so Dr. Bernier covered all, all of that about, we're not just talking about school as a building. Yeah, you can have a building, but you need all the staff. And if they've relocated to other areas or far away or no car, as we've already talked about. Now, getting back to what I've read on social media, there's already the naysayers about public education. And there are people out there that would dearly love to see a public school system fall down on something like this. And let's, let's be real, as Dr. Bernier said, how many kids are in Canterbury? How many kids are in some of these other little private schools? To open one school, not going to say exactly piece of cake, but it is a piece of cake next to what we have to do. We have so many moving pieces here. So you can't, first of all, you can't compare us to the local Lee County private schools that are single buildings. Secondly, the big comparison is Collier. Well, Collier's opening their school. Okay, let's, let's take a look. A big part of Collier is like Amokale. I don't think Amokale was affected very much. They're too far east. The storm didn't come, the eye of the storm wasn't over Naples. It came aboard right in the middle of our county and we've got a lot of coastline here. So I'm just going to say, those of you that are pointing, well, Collier has their schools open, just knock it off and get educated and think about where the storm came in, the fact that Collier is a lot smaller school district than we are. Think about those things. Think about the words that were presented, safe, sensible and effective. All right? It's going to sound insensitive to say people are getting back to work and talking about no childcare. But again, we're not in the business of childcare. And we feel for the people and we understand, most of us, if we don't have children ourselves, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, we know people that are hurting because of that. But this community has joined hands in so many ways that perhaps in this particular case, neighbors can help neighbors with things like that. There's, 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 everything is fluid. And so what I'm thinking is, and I'm putting it out there again, there are people that can't wait for the public schools to fall apart. They love to dig in a knife and twist it and blame the schools. But we were good partners with this county in opening, we were part of the EOC days before the county didn't, did not send out mandatory evacuations. We had our shelters open. We have our people in those shelters, as Dr. Bernier said, even now as these shelters, the ones that are still open from that are schools, even now that it's taken over by the Red Cross, there are buildings and we're going to have a watchful eye because a lot could hap, a lot could happen with that many people in. So my word to the community is, if you don't have anything good to say about what we're doing here as a district and how hard everybody has worked, just keep it to yourself. I know I don't want to hear it. Now, God bless America. You have your First Amendment rights, but just think before you start complaining and Off the soapbox.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Was there any other comments before we move forward?
Can we take a break?
Dr. Do we take a break?
Before we move on to?
I'm asking for a break before we move on to the action portion of the meeting and the.
Let's, let's just, let's just, we only have this part to go real quick. Dr. Bernier, did you have anything else to, to say?
No, at this time, ma'am.
Thank you. So I'm just going to move on to the public, the next one is the public comment. Mr. Prey Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Good afternoon and thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comment are posted in and will be made from the podium in the front of the center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition to clapping, hissing and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing or display of temper during the public comment time is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. The time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20, two minutes if there are 30 and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time is elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone and I will call you five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, there are four speakers. Even though at this point, the superintendent has invoked the board policy with regards to emergencies, we will still follow the 1.11 rule for public comment.
We have four speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to the staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone who would like to address the board that did not fill out a card? Okay, Mr. Prey Bruno, please go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the following. With the following individuals, please line up. Keith Olson, Denise Nystrom, Heidi Krassenstein, Tara Jenner. The time per speaker is three minutes.
At the start of today, I spoke to one of the young ladies over there and asked if we could waive the time limit for today. This is a very unusual situation. I don't think any one of us wants to talk for 10 minutes, but if I go over the three, I would appreciate the speaker, the microphone not being turned off, not today. And so now I present that to the board before anybody speaks, because it wasn't even addressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Prey Bruno?
Those were her comments.
Okay. Mr. Olson?
My name is Keith Olson. Dr. Bernier, I want to thank you for your comments, your sensitivity, your grasp, and just how you handled your whole presentation. I really appreciated that very much. I have started out having a couple of things. One, there's been no particular mention about crisis intervention, help for our staff, for our students, and I'm sure there is a plan about that, but I think some feedback would be worthwhile. The second issue is about the portables. From the presentation, I think I'm pretty sure that we're going to need portables. I'm interested in the current condition of our portables. How do they survive? How many are okay? How many are not going to be able to use? And in the, adding more portables, I'm concerned that if we just purchase a whole lot of portables, that's going to be added to those that have been mainly in District 5 for 25 years. And so I would encourage us to, if we need to procure more portables, to do it either leasing or renting them, because that states an intention to not use them kind of like forever, the way it has been done in District 5. So I make that plea, really. The third item, which I just came up with during the meeting, is that I really do think it's unfortunate that a board member felt that she had to resort to politics and to get defensive. I understand frustration when you're working really hard. I've run a business for 45 years, and when people are critical, that's hard. And yet, it goes beyond the reference to the American flag and, you know, speakers' rights and all that sort of thing. It goes to human decency. No, if I do have something negative, hopefully it's substantive. If it's not substantive, then you're right, I should be quiet. But if it's substantive, we need to be able to hear it, even though we are working very, very hard and in good faith. So I do think it's unfortunate that you had to go there. The other side of it is, thank you so much for all your hard work and your efforts, and as a community member, I'm 100% behind you.
This is a very sad time for Lee County. The devastation is unfathomable. I've had a chance to check on a lot of areas, because I went to see friends so that I could help them out. Island Park, Cape Coral, the McGregor area, everything is devastated, and I fear that we're going to have more bad news, really unfortunate news. I too would like to thank the superintendent for his constant communication with families. I've seen him all throughout social media and was able to relay that information to others. As someone that chaired a district-wide safety committee, there is no one right approach when you're trying to do what you're trying to do at this point, and it's going to be every day, just doing what you need to do to get where you need to get. Dr. Olson brought up the whole point about portables, so I too just want to convey that I hope that nothing more is purchased, as that's already caused a big problem for our East Lee area. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that during the last hurricane, unnecessary work was given to contractors that did not meet the FEMA guidelines, and the district was therefore flagged by FEMA and by the Florida Auditor General, and the result was a loss of $30 million. If I'm not correct, please feel free to correct me. Moving forward, will measures be put into place to guarantee that contracts are awarded fairly to vendors, that vendors have, that the vendors have the expertise that is necessary to be awarded that contract? And if a vendor quotes a price and then goes over that price, will there be some type of procedure put into place so that it doesn't go from a $3 million contract to an $11 million contract? The other thing is that when I toured a lot of the areas today, a lot of people do not have electricity or running water, and it's going to be many, many days before they do. I know that we now, based on what you were saying, are down to two shelters, but perhaps there is a way to open up some of the schools, to give folks an opportunity to charge their cell phones, to use the bathrooms, to take showers, because people, at this point, some of them have not had running water for a week. I didn't think I really needed that much more than three minutes, but I was just kind of hoping that on a day like today, when we're looking at a tragedy such as this, that someone would have been kind enough to make a motion and second it. Thank you.
Yes.
Tara Jenner. I know that the public comment instructions state that the board won't respond, but I'm hoping that maybe the superintendent will reply to some of the questions that I have. In light of the fact that I sat here for an hour and 15 minutes, when I'm supposed to be helping people clean up their house and get things taken care of, our time is important too, and to have to listen to straw hats and apples drove me absolutely despair. I caution everybody, please, when you're using acronyms that are new to a lot of people, given the current situation, please translate those back into English. I would like to thank the superintendent for his comments about ensuring that the FEMA paperwork will be done correctly. As mentioned previously, in the past, it was a huge and costly failure to the district when we didn't comply with that. And I also want to make sure that there are safeguards and very clear bidding oversights in place to ensure no unfair advantage or favoritism, either in fact or given an appearance of impropriety, especially to any school board members and individuals they may know. I'd like to compliment you, Dr. Bernier, on the videos, which have been very helpful for those people that have internet access, but I have been asked to share from some in the community, concerns that they are not able to see video as easily as they can written material. So we respectfully request that the transcripts of those videos be also provided in Word Dot in English, Spanish, and probably Creole as well. And while the PowerPoint slides look great from the briefing standpoint, they do take up a great deal of additional data and make it more challenging for people who do have limited access to download, especially when you add those beautiful photographs in, which are also a challenge. It's also been requested that the comment section for the YouTube videos be opened at this point in time for the ongoing videos dealing with Ian, and that might help some people with communication. Many homeschoolers have been hit hard in this area as well. And so, Dr. Bernier, I would ask if you would consider, at least as one of your midterm goals, to have a single location for those of us who have resources we are willing to share to the homeschool community, and we can drop them off, and people can pick them up, because unlike in the schools, we do not have access to everybody's contact information, but the school district does for those who are signed up through home education. I've also been asked to ask for an update regarding Lee Virtual School due to limited access by many to the internet, and if there is a plan on that. We had the comment about the portables, so we can go from there. And speaking of portables, do we have a status on what any of those are in and the shape that they're in? I know we heard about the schools, but not necessarily the portables themselves. And on a personal note, Mr. Prey Bruno, could I trouble you for the phone number and email contact for Mr. Quick, because my internet's down, and I've got a two-week response time for a motion to dismiss, and I can't...
And if possible, if I can get a response, I need to get out of here and help some people.
Is that Heidi? Yes, sorry. I'm Heidi Krassenstein. My son is in kindergarten at Sanibel. So this is my very first board reading ever, but I had talked to many Sanibel families, and since my home was okay, they asked me to come to the board meetings, just so we could kind of see the status. One thing I think that you guys did cover is that your thought, it's a thought, and you're thinking about where those children will go, and that you want to keep them together. And I think that's just what most of us parents want, is that all of our kids stay together in a way. So you'd said something about sending them to Cypress Middle as a possibility. That's something that you were thinking, just in the text messages while we were having the meeting. Some people had brought up Bell Tower as a possibility, and then also somebody had said that they'd talked to the management or owner of Sanibel Outlets, and that apparently he had, they just said that that was maybe a possibility also. I didn't know anything about the portables until somebody had said something, so there is, I guess, you just need a space to put it, is my understanding. But it sounds like you guys have it under control. This came as like representation to say, we want our kids to stay together, and we were hoping that they weren't dispersed amongst the community. But now we know that there's a lot of moving parts to get any of the schools open, so we appreciate all of your thoughts.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. And Heidi, thank you for being here and representing Sanibel, and we understand the hardship there as well. And as Dr. Bernier said, this is something that's ongoing, and of course, we're looking at all of our schools, especially our island schools and all of those that were hit hard on, you know, what is the next step for those children? And we're not, I don't think we were looking at putting one over here, one over there, so we're looking at it as a whole, and trying to make sure that we are taking care of everybody. And it is a long process, and we're trying to make sure that, you know, we're doing the right thing by all. And I know portables were mentioned, and I know even if you go back to Charlie, when Charlotte County got hit, and they had to make a portable city for a time where people had to, places to live. So we're trying to look at every avenue again on how, what that looks like for our students, and making sure that we get our kids back into schools, so that they can learn, and making sure that everything is safe on that. Dr. Bernier, did you want to mention, virtual school is the same situation as all of our other schools at this time, correct? We're looking at school as school as a whole, correct? Because, one, connectivity with, out there, I know I have no connectivity with anybody out there. I have no electric, I have no water. So, and I know Cape has 100% water right now. Lee County, they're building that up, but as far as the schools are concerned, we're looking at all of our, the educational proponents, as far as homeschool, virtual, all of that, brick and mortar as the same, correct?
Generally, yes, but with a clarification that the Lee County Virtual School would reopen. Clearly, it's not physically impacted as a virtual school. It's also, offices are located within this building, and this building is in operable condition. It's going to need some minor repairs. We would put this in the low category. But it's complicated, related to the connectivity of our students, so we need to make sure in that student survey that I talked about, once we do the staff check-in, it will be vital to make sure that we have a student check-in with all of our sites, to make sure we know where our students are, and even more, more so important in virtual, because depending on what transpired in a home, it's not just connectivity.
Right.
There may be no Chromebook.
Correct.
So, and there may be no bed. There may be no home. So it, I just, I hate to peel back the onion and sort of talk about how complicated this is, but I kind of feel like the more we talk about the complications of it. But our commitment to reopening our schools is as soon as possible, and if we have good news on the 42, 43, sorry, on the 43, we'll move. And then we'll figure out what the gap looks like, and how to help children through that gap time, until we can build them. And if you don't mind me addressing the wonderful person from Sanibel, as well as our other speakers today, thank you very much for your comments for the board and for myself, but I'll deflect, I'll deflect those comments to the board. The board has been incredibly, their leadership in this has been phenomenal. We will reopen. And when I said we're looking at non-traditional sites, remember you hired a guy who worked in alternative ed, who had spots for schools inside Universal Studios, who had spots for schools inside Goodwill's, who had spots for schools inside shopping malls? We will find, we will do everything possible to keep these communities of learners together.
Thank you. And then also, if you don't mind, when the assessments were done with the schools, the high, low, medium, that was, that also were, the portables were included in those high, low, mediums, correct?
The portables were, the portable conditions were where portables exist, the portable conditions were taken into effect, and that may be some reasons why schools are in a medium category. The school building, the physical school building itself may be fine, but the portables are going to need additional work. So yes, the portables were considered as part of that building assessment, the initial one, and we'll certainly get a deeper dive in the professional assessment.
Perfect, thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you for that. Sorry, turn myself off here. Okay, so next, we're moving on to the approval of the action items of the agenda under consent. The documentation for our action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all materials, and we have the opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we have made, have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business items portions of this agenda? Ms. Javonelli? Ms. Javonelli?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher is not here. Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
I have none, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
None, thanks.
Ms. Morgan?
And I have none, thank you.
And I have none. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent action items?
I move that we approve the consent items as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Motion by Ms. Gittens and seconded by Ms. Vaughn. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Dr. Bernier, was there any, did you have anyone to introduce, any administration intendants with new assignments that was approved by the, under this consent agenda?
Actually, I do. I mean, when you look for the word resilience, this might be a definition of it in the midst of everything that's occurring. Individuals, including principals and family members that support them, are here today to support some wonderful opportunities that are being provided to our persons that I'm about to announce. I will remind everyone, we take this opportunity each and every time. This appointment is an indication of the strong trust that this board and your superintendent puts in all of you when it comes to working and helping our children to be successful. Those words ring even more true today, six days post the storm. So we appreciate the hard work of the principals in their selection process to find amazing candidates. I want to do a better job of recognizing the family members that may be present today, because it will be you who supports these individuals moving forward as they take on additional and countless responsibilities, and their hours of operation change significantly. So to the board, I'd like to introduce by standing up Casey Cobb, who will be joining Estero High School as a new assistant principal. And Richard Mercurdante, who will be joining North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts as an assistant principal. Congratulations to both of them, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to both of you. Okay, we are to board member comments. Ms. Javonelli, did you have any comments?
Can I go at the end, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I want to start by saying, Dr. Bernier, you and your team, you have my trust... So I want to start by saying, Dr. Bernier, you and your team, you have my trust, and you have my confidence. And I'm very grateful for what you've done up to this point. I want to say to Dr. Ramirez, Dr. Cupid-McCoy, and Dr. Bernier, you're one of us now. I don't think you can go through a time like this and not really be enveloped as part of the team. I think that before, you were these leaders who came in from someplace else, and you had great ideas, and you were bringing those ideas to our students and to our staff, but boots on the ground, the work that you've done over the past week, I just really feel like you're one of us now. So I wanted to say that. I do believe that God puts things in your path for a reason, and I believe that He put you where you are right now, to lead during this time and in this moment. So you have my support, whatever you need. I believe that you will lead us through the rebuilding, all the way to the point where we're stronger and beyond. So, patient, poised, and professional are the three words I believe you used. You have been all of those things, as I have seen you communicating with the community, and I appreciate that. My two words are patience and positivity, and I am trying to exercise those as often as humanly possible, especially when I was home with four teenagers, no power, and no internet. That tested my patience a little bit. I have to talk about Mary Blackman at Spring Creek Elementary. So I was able, I've been able to see some of our schools, and this goes to the point of view comments that I have as well. Mary Blackman, I want to say that the damage at her school was probably greater than any of the other schools that I've been to in the south part of the county, in my part of the county. And when I say damage, I mean debris. It was just leaves and branches and all of that. So I went over there today to help her and her staff to remove the debris, and when the staff greeted each other, it was, it really brought home for me the importance of what, what the Sanibel representative was talking about today. So many of our schools are going to have each other through this, and the kids will have each other, and the parents will have each other, but so many of our schools won't. And I don't think I really understood the importance of keeping them together until I saw that reunification today. So I'm really grateful that you're, that you're willing to do that. I want to say that it was Dr. Ramirez who said that some of our schools are low, and some moved to medium, and then some moved back to low, and that it's a fluid thing. I saw that firsthand when I was at, when I was at Spring Creek, because the first time I went there, they were fine. They were, you know, a little bit of flooding in a couple of rooms, and otherwise were fine, and then the power came back on, and some major system blew. So this is incredibly fluid. A school that appears to have no damage at all, I think might not have air conditioning now or something. I forget what major system it was that blew, but it is incredibly fluid. The importance of getting back to school cannot be overstated. The importance of getting back to school cannot be overstated, but at the same time, the challenges that we face cannot be overstated either. So while it's our goal, we have to be realistic about that goal. And point of view is really, really important as I go out into the community and as I talk to people. Somebody mentioned it, I think it was Dr. Bernier, a sensitivity to experiences. My point of view, being in the south part of the county, is that restaurants are open, and grocery stores are open, and we have internet, and we have power, and we have schools with minimal damage, and it's easy for us to lose patience and think, well, why aren't we just in school? And then I look on social media, and I see teachers teaching in my children's buildings who've lost their homes. And so how do those teachers go back to school and teach? So again, you know, when we get frustrated, and our point of view is not that of the barrier islands or Cape Coral, I mean, Cape Coral has been decimated and devastated here too, and they're not getting as much attention. We have teachers who are teaching in the south part of the county who come from everywhere. So the other point of view I want to offer to you is that, I want to say we were closed for 14 days for Irma, weren't we? 14 days our buildings were closed, and that storm was not nearly as catastrophic and disastrous as this one was. So that's my point of view, sort of coming into this. Each day is better than the one before. You have said that over and over again in your conversations. This is like eating an elephant one bite at a time. I mean, this is a massive, massive task that we have in front of us. And when I talk to your staff, mostly Dr. Ramirez, he takes my calls, and your level of energy is unbelievable. And as I look out at the staff that's here, and I look at Deborah seated in the back, I wish I could remember your last name, but I can't, I'm sorry. I have to recognize the sacrifice that your own families have made in order for you to be here, because I know you have families, and I know you have young children, and it's scary for them to be going through this without you being there physically with them. So the sacrifices that your own families have made for you to be here does not go unnoticed. I want to publicly thank the sheriff and his staff. I think he has provided phenomenal leadership throughout this. I want to thank the county commission and the county staff. We cannot reopen schools without them, and they really have been wonderful in trying to get the power up, and trying to get the water back on, and trying, all of those county issues impact our ability to function as a school district, so I want to thank you, thank them for being the partners that they have been. I want to thank Representative Adam Botana, who reached out and said, I have a direct line to the governor, whatever it is that you guys need, please let me know. So I'd like for you to know that, and if there is anything specific, I know you have a direct line to the governor too, but if there is anything specific that you think we need help from our local delegation, Representative Botana has offered that. I have heard that the communication with principals has been fantastic. I think I saw Shanna Fletcher out there earlier. Your name in particular came up. It's my understanding that you've had significant losses in terms of your physical living situation. No, you're shaking your head, no. But despite all of that, you are in touch with principals. Dr. Spiro, your name has come up frequently, as well as someone who's directly in touch with your principals. It's my understanding that the communication there has been very clear, very consistent, and very supportive. I have to mention that the Benita Springs High School football team, and I'm sure other teams across the district, have gone out and they have helped families whose homes needed to be gutted, and, you know, furniture taken down onto the curbs, and all of that. And while we are closed as a district, and our teams can't get together and be together on the field, we can certainly do community projects together as teams to keep that camaraderie, and a lot of what they're doing requires a lot of physical exertion, and that will keep them in shape as well. I want to say thank you to the Department of Education. It's my understanding that they've been very, very supportive. And the last thing I'll tell you is that FSBA wants to help. We have a board meeting this week. Kathleen, Ms. Morgan and I, we're supposed to travel to that. We're not going to travel to it, but we will, we will call into the meeting on Friday. And it's my sense that we don't yet know what we need, so I think I'm going to tell them exactly that, and beg them to still be there six months from now when we know exactly what we need. But if you could just update me before Friday as to what I should tell them, that would be great. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, thank you. A couple of things. First of all, I kind of bounced back and forth between Harnes-Mars Shelter and East Lee High School Shelter, even delivering toilet paper when necessary. But I can't say enough about the staff that I did encounter and work with at those two sites. And I think the superintendent said it best when he says, we're in the people business. That's our commodity. That's what we do. We don't sell widgets, we deal with people, and at all levels and all ages and all, everything. So I, one, I thought that one of the songs that comes to mind when I went to both shelters was the song, "We Are Family." And some of the teachers and staff that had lost a lot, that couldn't get back to their homes. And one evening at Harnes-Mars, they actually grilled outside and had barbecue, and had a great time. So you make the best of, you know, bad situations, but working together and helping people. One thing I want to say, and I know it's tricky saying this, but the comment about, you know, we don't want to be opening schools in January and all that, well, first of all, number one, we know that that was a fallacy that was put out there, and we need to just wipe that out of our mind. That is not something that is going to happen, or whatever. We are working to get schools open. And in the same vein, what it brought to mind to me is people are comparing Ian and COVID. And they're not sisters, or brothers, or anything of the sort. They just aren't. There was no damage to any buildings in COVID, and yeah, we just flipped the switch and go back in after we spray it down. There's a whole different story. These are not even kissing cousins. They are just not in the same vein. And I'm begging for me to not compare the two, and think back, well, we've got to open the schools up. We know that, and we are working tremendously hard to make sure that gets done as soon as possible. We all know the damage to students when they're not in school. We know that. We saw the achievement gap numbers come in nationally as well as locally, but this is not the same. So I am asking, I am begging people to, let's keep apples, apples, and oranges, oranges, and talk about Ian differently from COVID. It is not the same thing. And then finally, I was talking to some friends the other day, and the topic came up of survivor guilt. And you may have heard this, but survival guilt is like, you know, your neighbor's house, the roof is gone, their car floated down the street, and you got everything intact. And you had lights, and you had air, and water, and all of that. And there's just a certain feeling that, that people get, like, oh goodness, didn't happen to me, and, you know, now I have to do something. So think about the survival guilt. You can look it up if you have internet, otherwise I'll text it to you. But it causes people to actually be depressed in thinking, why, why did I survive this? Why did I not have this situation? So what I want to mention is what you do when you have that. We have air now, I don't want to say that too loud, but we have water. So, you know, folks have come by and taken a shower, and they are just happier than a bug in a rug that they could come. And I know, because I know when I got my first one, it was wonderful. But with survival guilt, a lot of times, people will start to organize and do things. And in watching and seeing all that we're doing in the county right now, I would reach out to say to people, use that 211 number. Let's coordinate efforts, because if we've got, you know, a Kool-Aid stand on this corner, and a Kool-Aid stand on the next corner, let's put them all together, and then more people can have Kool-Aid at the same time. So I love the fact that the superintendent mentioned the 211. Call that and ask if you, you know, feel like I got to do something, call that and coordinate with others. As a team, as a family, we can get a whole lot more done. And one of the things that has come to me as well, we have drop, you know, we have stations where you can come and pick up things and all that, but remember the people whose car was floating down the street last week this time. And so we also have to look at those that can't get to us. How do we get to them? Who are they, and where are they? And that can all be coordinated through that 211. Someone was telling me this morning, the United Way Out in Lehigh, they called them to see, you know, what they could do to help them, and they said to call, you know, the overall organization, the 211, because everybody was combining together. We can get so much more done so quickly if, if everybody works together. I think that that's all I have right now. Can I, okay. One of the, I had to get permission to do this one. I got a couple of calls from some people in the area of James Stevens that are saying that there are people that can't get out, that to come to some of the areas to pick up food. So I asked the superintendent, and what they're going to do, and you can give the details of it, but on Thursday, we're going to have a grab-and-go food site at James Stevens, and he'll give you the details when he speaks. But thank you so much for that. And if you're at some of these distribution sites, and you've got gas in a car, then put some stuff in the back of your car and drive down to some of those areas that are really hard-hit, that you know they can't get out, and, you know, handing out stuff to people that way. We don't even know who they are all the time. So let's coordinate efforts, you know, thank God we have the resources that we do, and I thank you again to the superintendent and all the staff. And we'll just keep doing this until it gets done. It's not COVID, it's Ian.
Thank you all, and God bless. Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Well, so far, I think most of the thank yous have been, have been covered. My huge thanks to all of the district teams that have been working so hard. I think Dr. Bernier has done a stellar job of keeping us informed, and not only informed, but reaching out and saying, well, how are you? How, you know, how did things go? Are you okay? And I really appreciate that, as somebody who was very, very fortunate not, not to have any huge damage or lasting effects in my home or my community. But we've done a lot of talking here about the different, well, not so much the charities, but the places that are handing out food and other resources. And that's one reason why I was looking forward to getting here, because I guess I kind of live in a bubble where I, where I live, the community I live in, including my neighbors who are in more of a bubble than, than I am. And so I, I think that consolidation and getting the word out, because I asked our board attorney when I, when she was making some calls yesterday, I said, well, I want to be out volunteering, but I don't know where to go. And she sent the Google list that we have, and certainly I'm going to be, as time goes on, since I have been so fortunate, especially since I've been so fortunate to find more ways that I can get out into the community. I can't, unfortunately, maybe I could 10 years ago, but I can't do a lot of the, you know, heavy-duty lifting, physical work, but there are a lot of other things that, that I can do. I believe as a member of the board, that it is my duty to give some different perspectives. We had one perspective from a board member, and a little while ago, I offered a different perspective. I think we are all together, as a couple of you have said, on we've got to get these schools open. schools open. But hopefully, we're all together on all those moving pieces. And again, it depends on the level of experience you have and the knowledge that, that you have on all of the moving pieces. I know my daughter, who is without power and went to, to a place, she went to another home to stay because she works remotely, and she needs power. And, you know, there, I'm sure there are a lot of people like that. The other day, a good friend of mine who needed power and didn't have it in her home or her office, came and spent a few hours at my house getting out her payroll for her employees and that sort of thing. So what I said earlier is, I know it sounds cold when I say we're not in the business of being daycare, but what Ms. Gittens said was also important, don't compare to COVID, because there were a lot of things in the time of COVID where people didn't want to go to somebody else's house. And they were afraid for this group of children and that group of children to get together because they would get sick and the parents would get sick. I, I think really, from, from what I've seen, this, this is a time, it, it represents more reaching out and, and helping people. Sometimes they're neighbors or friends that you know, and other times they're people that you barely know, that you're just reaching out and saying, like, one of my really good friends did in taking in, I don't remember how many pets and, and people, because she had a second story to her home in Island Park. And they didn't, and that night, they literally, especially her husband, they literally saved lives that night by putting his own life on the line, strapping himself together with one of the other people in the neighborhood, and rescuing people that had one-story homes. And those homes in Island Coast, or Island Park, rather, were engulfed. And, and so, you know, we have all of those stories, and, and so this is a different time. That said, the community not only needs to know about the acts of heroism, heroism, but the community also does need to know that there are people out there that are happy, I'm going to say it again, to drive a knife into public education, that couldn't wait to start looking at this detail or that detail and comparing us. I mentioned, for instance, comparing us to Collier County. If you're going to do that, and I'm being substantive here, you better know your facts, and you better realize where the hurricane came in and how many schools we have, and how many schools another one has, and all, all of those things. And again, somebody who spent, I spent my life in schools, I understand, and I think most of us here, we understand the moving parts. And we understand it's not just about a building that looks decent from the outside, but looked decent, and then a system blew, and they can't, or they look good, but the toilets don't flush, or, you know, they don't have clean drinking, all those things. But the people, the people are, are the big things, our, our staff and all of that. So yes, you have your First Amendment rights, and I do too. And I just want to educate here and be sure that all of you realize what the school district does, what the county does. Hopefully, we're being good partners, but there are some things that we're responsible for, educating those kids and the good of the community, and there are other things that the county government is responsible for. And I'm going to say, knowing what I know from being kept up to date by Dr. Bernier with his team, that we were beyond responsible partners in all of that. So excuse me if I get a little testy when I see people pointing fingers and blaming school district for things that those same people do not understand. Finally, yes, we will rebuild. And I spent, once I got my power and connectivity back, I think I spent hours just looking at pictures, because I'd been listening almost nonstop to the radio and, and, you know, the simulcasts, and they were describing this, and, and I'm like, oh, you know, and you hear it, but then you see the picture. Picture's worth a thousand words, well, it's worth a lot more than that when I actually started seeing the pictures. And then I came upon one picture that I just loved, and I loved it so much, I made it, I posted it on my personal Facebook site. Is everybody here, I'm sure you know Harriet the Eagle in North Fort Myers, Harriet the Eagle, and the Eagle Cam. I forget that, it's a realtor, I forget the name of the place in North Fort Myers, but you know what, what is it?
It's off of Bayou.
Oh, Bayou, okay, but yeah, but anyway, Harriet and her partner, because she has a younger partner now, because the first one got in a fight and passed away. But the Eagle Cam is gone. The nest that Harriet and her partner were building is gone. But the picture that was posted was Harriet and her partner in the same tree rebuilding their nest. And I thought, wow, that is so emblematic. And so I like to think of us as a bunch of, especially since we're all ladies right now on the board, we're Harriets and partner. And we're going back to that tree, and the nest is all messed up, and maybe nobody's even taken a picture of us except a snapshot, but by the time those babies are born, the eggs are out there and born, we're all going to be happy and sharing with the new little eagle family. And so I'm looking forward to our new nests in, in the same tree. Wow, that was pretty poetic, wasn't it?
That was.
I'm done.
I can't best, better that one. No, thank you, I really appreciated that one, I, I needed that one. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so I, I just want to share a bunch of thank yous. Thank you to Dr. Bernier for his patience, his poise, and his professional leadership. I think we see evidence that, that the team has really adopted that as, as their cultural norm. I want to thank you for your comprehensive description of the district's physical status, and for your exploration, or your explanation of the efforts to connect with students and staff, and for the various communications you shared with the community throughout this crisis. I also want to let the board members know that for three days, we had intermittent cell service, and the only information we got was from Dr. Bernier. He was, he was our connection to the outside. I want to thank staff and leadership for their commitment to providing a safe and healthy shelter system for everyone in Lee County. I want to thank the leadership team. From the onset of the storm, or the predictions of the storm, and as the crisis exploded, I was absolutely confident that this district would provide the extraordinary resources, personal and otherwise, and support to the people of Lee County. It was done, you, we were, leadership in this district was the leadership in Lee County and Irma. And in Ian, you were just a jump shift or a paradigm shift to a whole nother level of, of community support. So just a lot of thank yous. Thank you to my colleagues who asked great questions today. We are a community, and we're going to, we're going to get through this together. So thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Javonelli?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me? I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Can you hear, hear me?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I know everybody's thanking everybody, I just want to, I'll be real quick. I just want to thank Dr. Bernier and his staff and their leadership in this crisis. I, I know it's been challenging, and it will be for quite some time, as we know, for those of us that have already experienced this with Ian five years ago. So, you know, here we are again. Our area has undergone an enormous devastation that's unimaginable, and the loss that so many individuals have faced is unfathomable. As an elected official, I pledge to do everything in my power to ensure that our students are returned to the classroom at the earliest time. I am going to stay focused and stay in my lane, and which is to make sure that all students get educated in Lee County. And what that means and looks like in the next, an overcoming, you know, days, will be kind of different than the norm, but I'm here to support the superintendent and his staff, and excited to hear about the plan, because I think we need to have one, and for, to focus, for our families to be able to focus and make their plans. So we need to be clear and communicate that, and that's the things that I will be making sure that, that is what happens, so that Lee County can make decisions for each individual family as things arise, as we move forward as a school district. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Javonelli. And, and I would just like to say, thank you, everyone has thanked everybody, so I really did owe it all that. And I do want to thank the board members who, that you made it here. I know you all are going through a lot as well, and I, I thank you for being here. Because as Ms. Javonelli said, we've, we've dealt with, I've been here for years and years, and I've dealt with many, many hurricanes, but we've never dealt with the devastation of this water. It was probably the scariest thing that I've ever seen. And I, and I know that, you know, because there's nothing I can do at my house, so I have been annoying to everyone, because I've been everywhere trying to be as helpful as possible, and being at the shelters and seeing how hard the staff is working, and our, the cafeteria workers making those meals three times a day, and just really making sure that everybody is fed, and just the administrators, everything, and then being at the call center, taking those calls. Those calls are like nothing you can even imagine coming through at the 211 hotlines. And I have the opportunity that I see Dr. B., and I see the staff running in and out of there and just staying there, and it's like, go home, get some sleep, because they're there 24/7. I'm there because I'm choosing to be there, because I, I feel that I need to be helping somebody. But the, I see our kids coming in there too. So we have students that are participating, and they're coming in there, they're answering those phones. And it's hard for me as an adult, but when I see these seniors coming in from our different schools and taking those phone calls, and how easy they sound in speaking to the people, and how calm they are, I am just so impressed by them. But I did want to share that, that hotline is, is really good for anybody who needs that, the 211. Definitely, please call that if there's anybody, because we still have a lot of people who are missing, and that number's, I'm doing a public service announcement right now, 477-1000, option one. If anybody is, that you feel that anybody's missing, or you need to find somebody, please, please, please call that number. The World Chef Kitchen is here, I've been helping them feed as well. And they have different sites, one is in Fort Myers, and one is in the Cape, at Santa Barbara and Cape Collar Parkway, and the other one is on 41, and one in Port Charlotte. Distribution sites are throughout Lee County that will provide food and water for everyone. Billy Bowl Eggs is serving food. The Renaissance Area, which, thank you, Ms. Gittens, for mentioning that, because I spoke to the Renaissance Area today, because they were, people were concerned about East Fort Myers not being taken care of, but they are up and running, they have electric, they have water, their Salvation Army has been in there. So we have a lot of people, a lot of moving parts, again, where you see everyone, everybody's coming out if, when they are, there's nothing else you can do for yourself at your home, so why not be out there and do what you can do for, for others? And so when you're out there, there are many, many people in our community helping, trying to work to, to assist as much as they possibly can. And I am very thankful for, for all of them doing that. And, and I will continue to do that as long as I, as long as I possibly can, and so will my family. They don't have a choice, they have to be out there too. But with that, Mr. Bree Bruno, do you have any comments?
I, I do. I have some thank yous too. I want to thank the attorneys from the Florida School Board Association that has reached out, provided a lot of support, just checking in and giving us some feedback. I really want to thank a couple of counties in particular who are almost, feels like they're actually embedded here, because we contact and communicate so often, Bay County, Miami Dade, Latuwa, and of course, the General Counsel of Fats has been incredible. So those attorneys have been extremely, extremely helpful. And I also want to thank some of our local attorneys who have reached out, who have particular expertise in this area or that, and have volunteered to contribute time to assess, to assist legal and some of the things that we'll be experiencing. So thank you to the legal community that's out there that's supporting us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bree Bruno. And before I go to Dr. Bernier, I did want to make, mention, as I was coming here today, it's so, it's kind of crazy, but I had two parents, two families waiting, one ready to sign their child up for school from Miami. They just moved into the area, they wanted their child to be signed in. I gave them to Fernando, because he was walking in, so I handed, handed them off. And then another one who came for their appointment for Fiddler, so, and I have their information, so whoever I have to give that to, I have that as well. But I just thought it was amazing that the parents still wanted to make sure that they were following up on what their children needed. And so thank you for interrupting, Dr. Bernier, please.
Well, thank you, madam chair, members of the board, members of the community. First and foremost, that which doesn't take you under does make you stronger. So thank you for the opportunity to serve. I would tell you that I have tried my very best to hold on to poised, patient, and professional. I think I have been very direct. My team has decided that when I whisper, there's a problem. So I've used just acquired a voice when I want to get everybody's attention, and they've been fantastic. But I will tell you, we are driving. Mr. Ramirez opened the EOC this morning with a very clear, delineated voice that said, I am still who I am, but as the chief of staff, I am the driver of our reopening. So understand it is my job to push on you, and it doesn't change who I am, it doesn't change how much I care about you, but it is my, it is now my job. And I really respect that leadership, and I know the team respected it as well, because it doesn't change who he is and what's he, what he's about, but he's definitive in his role, and his superintendent wants to extend that appreciation to him. Not going to tell a story about an eagle, but I will tell you that resilience is a practiced characteristic. It doesn't come easily. It has to be practiced, you have to work on it, you have to take the time to ensure that you have built up your own resilience, because as Lori Brooks will tell you, you can't help someone by pouring from an empty vessel. You have to take care of yourself, and that includes no matter whether you're a superintendent, bus driver, bus driver, grandfather, you must take the time to fill yourself before you can take care of other people. And please, as we practice our resiliency, let's keep in mind that sensitivity to others who have not been blessed by this, but we can work with to help them understand that that which has not put you under will make you stronger, and we can help support that process by taking care of ourselves so we can take care of them. I really appreciate the reunification story. It was a long conversation yesterday during the EOCs and again today about how we're going to reunify our staffs and our children, and how we're going to bring back that sense of community to them. So we've always been working sort of three problems at once. We've been working the current problem, we've been working the foreseeable future, and we've been working what comes after that. So even while we were setting up shelters, we were thinking about what would transpire during the storm and how we would connect each other through emergency radios, and then we were already establishing recovery plans. So now that we're operating on recovery and reopening, we are consistently looking at what the environment's going to look like once our schools do reopen, and they will I do want to extend a word of support to some professional colleagues in the community. I, in the course of speaking to national media and other places, mentioned a particular elementary school in the Cape, Cafaretta. Without speaking first to the principal, to the staff, I lost focus on what I knew in my head and had seen versus what others, who were still without electricity and without power and without those pictures that you've looked at, did not know fully the impact that that school building had gone through. So to that team, and to that principal, and to those individuals, I will apologize and make sure that that, to the best of my ability, never occurs again. I've arranged, or at least we think we have arranged tomorrow morning for me to go out, because one of the, I don't want to say it public, I'll talk to you privately, there's something that we want to get from that building and to ensure that the Cafaretta name continues, much like the principal from Sanibel and the principal from Fort Myers Beach Elementary and from Pine Island, getting some of their personal belongings to be able to take home, also some school belongings to share with their teachers. Finally, I would share that Pinellas County is going to be added to that plethora of districts that are helping to support us. They are the ones, when we talked about a food distribution site at James Stephens on Thursday, Pinellas County was the one who responded to the call and said they would help bring the grab-and-gos. We're going to get prepared for about 1,200 people, along with water, and Denise Carlin and her team have agreed to work with Ms. Gittens to help support that, because it's really important that where we can, and when people do ask us to help, we have some ways to say, "This is how." I will tell you that so much help has been offered at times where you don't really know what to say you need. So I think whatever we say to FSBA is that when we know we need something, we will reach out. And I tell you, they're patient with that, because they, the districts that have been through it, understand it. Until you get a little bit of clarity as to what you need, then it makes it much easier to reach out. Those are my comments in closing, except to say again, this is a model of servant Thank you for recognizing the team. No one individual does anything by themselves, and my team has embraced the concept of servant leadership, they've embraced the concept of sooner rather than later, and they are determined to ensure that we get things done safely, with sensitivity to this community and effectively, but sooner rather than later. So thank you for that help and support, because that makes it easier to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. B. Next meeting of the board on Wednesday, October 12th, there will be a board workshop at 12:00 PM. On Tuesday, October 18th, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 PM, followed with a regular meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no further business to come before this board, and see no objection, this board meeting is adjourned, and the time is, I don't know, 5:49. Thank you, and please be careful and drive safe out there.